Okay, make a note that Heidi is in the process of getting her on electronically, and Kyle is electronically, and everybody else is here. So right now, we got six of us. So we get Heidi on the line. Do the kids present want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes.
Sing the whole cheer, Ms. President, or you want to...
Collectively.
Collectively. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for which on nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in the heart.
He's here.
Okay, make a note that all seven of us are here, two are participating remotely, and five of us in the room. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
Second.
I got a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with news from the state's top educational position. Missouri Education Commissioner Margie Van Deven announced that she is resigning effective July 1, 2024. Van Deven informed the State Board of Education members during their October meeting. Dr. Van Deven has over 30 years of experience, including seven years as Missouri's Education Commissioner, serving from 2015 to 2017, then returning to the position in 2019.
I have worked for a Democratic governor, I have worked for a Republican governor, and I have found that when we focus on students, it should be a nonpartisan issue. As I mentioned, it's not the political choice, it's the right choice.
In a statement released that same day, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall said, "Commissioner Van Deven's announcement of her resignation at the end of the fiscal year gives us pause to celebrate the work of a transformational leader, whose dedication to Missouri's children has been unwavering and inspiring. She provided guidance and leadership to Missouri's K-12 systems during some of our state's most challenging times, staying laser-focused on ensuring a quality education for every child. The Commissioner has been an outspoken advocate for our teachers and has promoted strong local governance and improved investments in programs to safeguard our children. We remain committed to continuing the legacy of excellence she has fostered and look forward to working with her until her departure next year. For the past few years, Missouri school districts have seen an influx of funding, courtesy of the federal government's response to the pandemic and other sources. As a result, education budgets benefited, offering support to districts across the state. MSBA Senior Finance Director Linda Quinley says that as some of that funding goes away, it's important for district leaders and communities to recognize and address the inevitable challenges ahead."
We are growing more and more concerned about the fiscal funding cliff that we know we've all been watching for, but is now actually here. We are looking at the end of our SRF funds. We also know that the DESI waivers are coming to an end. And then we have state revenues down significantly because of the tax cuts from two years ago that are continuing to roll in year after year. We also know that the enrollment and attendance numbers have remained low. So collectively, all of those things are going to impact the future opportunities for revenues for all of our schools across Missouri.
And it's never too early to start planning for your school district's next budget. Budget planning is a meticulous process that requires a thorough understanding of a school's financial needs, priorities, and constraints. A school finance webinar series hosted by Linda is starting at the end of this month. Get all of the school finance information you can use from the comfort of your home or office.
Our webinar series around budget planning and getting the budget to the finish line is really what we want to help people do, is intended for our brand-new finance leaders, whether they be superintendents, bookkeepers, finance officers. They're also intended for people who've been doing this work for a little while but want to figure out how to make their budget a more usable document for their board, their community, and their administration. So anyone who's involved in the budgeting process inside the district is welcome to participate in this and hopefully gain some insights, some tools, and some tips to really present a great budget to the board in the spring.
Topics include making and communicating the budget plan, projecting current year's actuals to springboard next year's budget, and more. Visit the MSBA website for dates for each meeting and registration information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's fall regional meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions, as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay, anybody want to add anything to the board report? Okay, moving on. Next time our agenda was MSBA Annual Conference. Quickly, go through the room. Kyle, you want to add anything about the MSBA conference and what you learned? One thing that you learned?
Ooh, trying to pare it down to just one. I learned a lot, but then I sat in the new board member all-day training, so that was very informative. And then, we all sat in various seminars. But I think the one that stuck out to me the most, at the end of the day, was probably the seminar that was briefed by the Hollister School District, their superintendent and assistant suits, on the importance of culture within a district, and the impacts that good culture can have on staff retention, even when compared to the difficulties of pay.
Okay. Heidi, you want to add anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, new headphones, I had to make sure. I always enjoy the conference. This year, one of my favorite things was I went through a two-hour poverty simulation, and it was really incredible to see how people can easily slip into poverty and have issues in even getting their kids to school, or being able to address anything at school, because they're still trying to climb out of poverty. So it was very interesting. It was a whole simulation that showed how you could get into those situations. So that was one of the things I didn't necessarily enjoy it, it was hard. Everybody was very depressed up there at the moment, but it was very enlightening and important to learn.
Thank you for sharing. Erin, you want to share anything?
Yeah, probably, I will say I went to some very interesting sessions. Went to one on threat assessment for school safety, and that was very interesting. But the one that I thought, that I really enjoyed was on building a collaborative environment between, you know, stakeholders, including staff, administrators, parents, school board, all of that. So it was Springfield School District presented on it, and talked about like bringing everything to scale, but they had some really neat software that they had implemented, especially in like working through their master plan, and getting full engagement, having open discussions, and then just things like being principal for a day, which I think was really enlightening. You know, they were talking about like having community members come in and shadow our principals to see what an amazing job they have, and the issues that come up, and how, you know, kind of on the fly they have to be, while staying focused on academics. So anyway, I learned a lot from that, I thought it was really cool, and yeah, have ideas.
Thank you for sharing. Mary?
Well, they were all very good. I enjoyed the dialogue with the State Board of Education, and the things they're looking at, and the ribbon task force about, I have some notes here. Oh, about, you know, the things they're talking about with the task force, and about the climate and culture of, you know, what are we going to do for our teachers and our students with the climate and culture, and how can we change that? So I thought all those things were very interesting. I enjoyed all of the keynote speakers, they had some great things, and the AI, the one on AI, artificial intelligence, that was great. And then, my last one that I went to was on Saturday, and it was from Kelly Hopkins, who's been a longtime lawyer and policy, she was head of the Policy Department in MSBA, and she's retiring, and she just put away it all out on the line. She didn't bar anything, so she's like, what have I got to... So she was talking about, a lot about the sunshine laws and things like that. So it was all very, it's always very, you come away, first you come away with a lot of knowledge, and you come away feeling a little recharged.
Oh, I can go, I can go. Yeah, so as Kyle mentioned, in Missouri, you're required, of course, to have K-12 training during your first year as a board member. He and I have sat through about eight to 10 hours of training together, just on very foundational pieces of board governance, you know, policy, school finance, sunshine law. And I'm really stuck to kind of that theme as I chose my conference session, and managing your board policy, compensation theory, and just like really good, basic foundational pieces that are good for someone in their, serving in their first year, their first year. So I thought it was really valuable, I appreciated the conversation.
Why don't you and I attended a session together called A B A Patron?
Yes, we did.
You want to describe that a little bit, please?
Well, thanks for that, Austin. Yeah, no, 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 that was a really good session, dealing with, you know, when you're approached by someone in the community, or someone in the community who's upset about a situation, you know, how you can handle that in a way that's good for them, that supports school policy, that supports school administration, and really focuses on an outcome that's the best for everyone.
Yeah, so I want to build on what you said there. So one of the things they talked about was, you know, if you have a friend that approaches you, right? So let's say a friend approaches you, comes into a situation, and then, you know, then there was a whole list of triggering words, like 20 of them that she put up on the board. And once you heard one of those triggering words, you know, whether, then you have to stop being a friend, you gotta start being a school board member, and you basically gotta cut the conversation off. That was the one thing I got out of it, that, you know, that reinforced that what makes it so hard to be a board member in a small community is that you don't have friends, yet at some point, this job conflicts with being a friend sometimes, because of the trigger words and the legal requirements of... The other thing that I learned from that one was, you know, remember they talked about like the five layers? And they talked about, you know, you wave to somebody in a car, and then they know you're, they know what kind of car you, you know, you drive or whatever. And then they got to the common interest, like basically you live in a neighborhood, and you want to make sure your neighborhood's good and all that, and then you go to values. And then she said a lot of conflict is, you know, we all have our common interests with schools. But then when we start, when we get to the value level, person A has values, and person B has values, and then when you try to, you know, put your values onto somebody else, and you're so, then that kind of conflicts with the common interest of the school. I mean, I think, and that's where, and that's why I brought up, you know, the question about the banning of books, and, you know, and they did, she didn't have a good answer for that.
Right.
You know, because when I brought that, because you said that was a good question.
It was a good question, the way you asked it.
Yeah.
Did you get that copy of the presentation?
I did not, you know, I emailed, so I'm going to have to email them again. But that was the one that came to me, because I think when our conversations in the community are the common interest of the school, and I think that's where we're best at, you know, coming up with good solutions and stuff like that. And as long as we're not, you know, imposing our values on others, you know, we're not at that fourth level. Because the fifth level was, you know, you're basically, you know, you're married a little. So, but the fourth level, when you're imposing values on one another, that's where we get in trouble. But if you stay at the common interest level, then I think that's where our communities shine and do best.
That's a great session.
So anyway, thank you for listening to that, and good conversation. Anybody want to add anything else before we move on down the road? Okay, moving on, did anybody have something for public comments, Elizabeth? Okay, next item is...
High school.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I would make sure we didn't do the kids first. Yeah, so the high school and east updates. Dr. Berger?
Got Mr. Christopher right up front here, so we'll start with Bobby first for the high school.
I'll go back to my normal spot now. All right, so it's been another month since our last update. Again, a lot of progress, we've been pretty fortunate with the weather, but a lot of the same works ongoing. We've got utilities going down at the athletic field, football field primarily. We're taking those spoils, they're still cutting grade, we're actually roofing only tomorrow, but all the spoils are going to the other side of the creek, which ultimately make up the east side of the property where the baseball field is going down. Site utilities continue to move forward as the retaining walls go up. There's drainage for the football field that is scheduled to start next week, it might be the week after, depending on the soil conditions. We've got interior building slab placements ongoing. On average, we're pouring one or two times per week, we're trying to get two pours in a week, anywhere between 20 and 30,000 square feet on average. Underground M E P works pretty much completed, with the exception of a little bit of work in area G, which is the cafeteria area, so you've got cafeteria work and all of the other places there. Basically, walls are ongoing, we're pretty much complete through the center of the building, which is area D. And we're ongoing in areas E and F right now, along the exterior walls. So there's some components within the building that we're falling back to, we're kind of using those as rain day areas to fall back to if we're going to rain down on the exterior part of the roof. But the areas that we've got decking and roofing going down, we've got some fallback areas in those areas. Fencing's ongoing along the north property line, along Fast Lane. We've pretty much got all the fencing we can, you know, placed now until the spring. There's more fencing to put down, but we're basically going to stop there until we bring that road through. We've got retaining walls ongoing, pretty much just beyond where the fences stop, then we've got some other smaller walls that are going to be ongoing. We've got trust installation that continues to move forward, just got a large order of decking today, so a lot of trust is going to start throughout the week through area D, and we've got, you know, the decking going down on top of those now. Spray insulation has started in area A, so that's broken into kind of two wings, you've got an admin area, and you've got a council area. Both of those areas, one area's done, the admin area's done, and the council area is about halfway done, it'll be done tomorrow. Roof sheeting is ongoing, and roofing itself, both asphalt and membrane roofs, so asphalt roof is already taking place, area A's done for the asphalt shingles, and area A and C will start getting the membrane roof here in about a week and a half, once we get past... Thanks, David. Next slide, please. Looking forward into next week and throughout the balance of the month, grading work will continue, everything, moving all our spoils to the east side of the property to get those shaken out, interior and exterior masonry, the masonry in general, block masonry. We've also got, the brick is actually getting ready to start here in about a week and a half as well, so that'll coincide, it'll be overlapped with the block masonry. Shingle roofing's ongoing, we've got a small crew that's just continuing to chase, you know, my team behind us with sheeting it, they go through and put the substrate down, put the underland down to get it weather tight, and then they follow that up with the actual asphalt shingles. There's a few slides here of just concrete placement throughout the site, I believe what we're looking at here is the south, the south parking area. Some interior slab pores from about two weeks ago. Just ongoing trust activities, what we're looking at here is the high area over in area B, B C area. More ongoing exterior masonry, these are the tall walls that required the additional bracing, got off to the north side of the building, facing Fast Lane. This appears to be the long southern stretch. If you haven't been out there, there's a long corridor to the, I guess, to the north side of the building. This would be the exterior wall that makes up that, as well as the courtyard on that Ongoing underground runoff, this is a lockup conduit that we're looking at here, just continuing ongoing roof. Roofing, so it's hard to tell from this picture, but what you're actually looking at there is the black asphalt shingles, so that area is complete, it's from a roofing perspective. Ongoing posts for the site fencing, all these posts now have panels between them, all that works, pretty much as far as we can go. If you're familiar with the property itself, we're about, I'd say about two-thirds of the way all the way to the creek where the box culvert goes, is about where that fence has stopped at the moment. This is just an overall view, a bird's eye view of area A with a drone shot. So you see the area A is a smaller section down at the bottom of your screen, all of that is, been asphalt shigled to date. And then the center section, that's membrane roofing there, getting that webwork to take place here in about a week and a half. More aerial photos of area E, again, we're at the point now where all those are sheeted. So all of this currently has got sheeting on, and these trusses are set out, we're going after the steel bridges and sheeting on that curtain. And more of the same with area C and D. Those are pretty neat pictures. Areas E and F, we've got a lot of the interior walls going. This is the long southern wall I was talking about, that continues to be, we've got a couple concrete spores set up, one for tomorrow, which will basically tie all those corridors together. There's a whole roll shot of the canvas. A lot of progress in the last month. Is there any questions from the board?
Heidi, Kyle, any questions?
I'm good, thanks.
I'm good as well, thanks Bobby.
Thank you. Anybody in the room? Okay, now the good news of the night. Brianna's turn.
All right.
Thank you, Bobby. Good drum roll for you.
Yes, you. Did you have the photos? Did you have those?
Hustle him now, I don't recall him, but I'll...
That's all right, I can just talk about...
Just work through the change order, and I'll see if I can...
Well, give everybody the good news first.
Good news, please. The panel has arrived. Yeah, so it's installed, they've got the HVAC system running, I was actually out there earlier today, they've got flooring down, the wall base is down, looking like it's almost finished, they're just putting on the final touches. Substantial completion is November 27, which is coming up pretty quick here. They've got cubbies in, whiteboards, tack boards are in, restroom accessories and all that are all in, really just those like final touch-up things.
You want to add anything to that, Dr. Berger?
I do not, I'll get this presentation set up for her, she needs a second, sorry.
I'll play...
And we can go to the change order.
Yeah, let's do the change order next, we're going to be online for it.
Sure. So there are three change orders, kind of bundled into one for East. There is the RCO 5 for overhead wire. If you remember back in the spring, they had another change order pulled from it, this is kind of a follow-up to that, and included the actual electrical wiring that they would have to pull through it, so that's what this is, it's $5,008. In order nine, the change from four-inch CMU to six-inch in the restroom, we drew this four-inch concrete block walls, but then the contractor said they can't really do that, they needed it to be six-inch thick, he's got a four-inch. And then the last change on there is the floor transition branding, which is where we connected the addition to the existing building, and they took out a gutter, and the flooring underneath that door was pretty not good-looking. So they branded down that concrete and covered as close as they could to match the existing and the new concrete there. And then the very last thing on this is the delay because of the electrical panel. There's no cost associated with it, but it's kind of a formality, we have to list it on these change orders.
Dr. Berger, anything to that?
Nothing on the change order, I think I've got the business of our presentation on the grid.
Sorry, you haven't made approval of the change order?
I am, of course.
Okay. And Elizabeth?
There we go, okay. So if you just want to scroll through, the electrical panel is installed. And then, this is looking down the corridor of that addition, you can see like there's signage installed, they've got the paint done. If you keep scrolling, they've got the final doors are in place, and then cubbies are in, and shelving, I think is the next photo, both of those are installed, and these were taken a few weeks ago. Now flooring has been installed, and the wall base has been installed, so it's further along than what these photos show. And then the last photo, I think, is whiteboards and tack boards.
Any questions for Brianna? Kyle, Heidi?
I'm good, thanks.
Good.
Anybody in the room? Go ahead.
Can I ask about the change order?
Sure.
Okay, so I guess my question two, so how did the four-inch to six-inch not get caught when this first happened? That seem, if they were drawing four inches and the contractor, I don't understand how that, how that gets, because I get it's $1,800, but it's only $1,800. And on top of something else that didn't get caught, on top of multiple other things that didn't get caught?
Sure, sure. So this, we designed the drawings based on, you know, certain product of sink, it's wall-mounted, and so used for that is kind of like the standard wall thickness, that four-inch. But then, when the contractors actually went to install it, they, kind of on their own recommendation, they needed more rebar in that CMU. So any...
Is that something that you've drawn on others? I know you guys do schools, so are we the first ones going to six inches?
It's hard to say. So we draw the drawings, and then sometimes the contractors have different recommendations and things that, you know, might void the warranty, or just weird things that come up like that. So the sink, they needed it to be eight, or sorry, six-inch instead of four-inch.
Okay.
It's just made of part of the...
Yeah, the storm shelter.
You mean the storm shelter part?
Mm-hmm.
So that had something to do with that?
Not really, it's not a structural wall, it's really just there to support that sink.
Sure. I don't have any questions.
Dave, it looks like you have a question.
Nope.
You were figuring something out, you were doing numbers on your calculator there.
It looks to me like, I would just figure, it looks like, quick math shows that there was about three and a half percent change orders added to it. I'm not really in the construction field, but that don't seem like a hinged number to me.
It is not, it is not. And I can't cite off a standard, but I can tell you that's kind of the, the frustrations with projects is, you know, you're always looking to try to stand to the original contract sum. I'll tell you, it's rare, it can happen, but it's rare, so three percent is pretty acceptable, at least in the projects I've been involved with, that's something that's been a lot more than that. You know, and then you're kind of also breaking out, you know, stuff that... You know, and then you're kind of also breaking out, you know, stuff that, for example, I mean, I know we're not talking about a lot of money there, but could we have lived with the floor transition the way it was? Yes, but after Dr. Wayne looked at it, he heard, I know Dr. Wayne and I aren't always in sync on that. I'm usually a little more tolerable than he is, and then Brianna has no tolerance for it. So that's something that we conceded too, and of course, you guys have been well versed on the overhead wire pole, you know. That was dismissed by the contractor at the previous change order. And we said, hey, if everything shakes out at the end of this project, and we're feeling good about everything, we'll accept that you missed that and pay the bill, so. Yeah, three percent's pretty good.
Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the East Elementary School four-room addition change order in report, please. There's a motion and a second, any more discussions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the West presentation, Dr. Berger?
Yes, I'll just, thank you Brianna. Throw it to Mr. Crowe.
All right, thank you Dr. Berger, award. All right, kids, you can wake up now after that, we've had a change order conversation. Hey, it's finally our turn, we're gonna have some kids come up with Mr. Johnson in a minute, talk about our Spectrum program, which is our, what Red City calls their gifted program. But before we do that, we want to recognize a district stakeholder. This is not necessarily a volunteer award, because this young lady's being paid for her services, but she goes above and beyond what she's being paid for. She substitutes in our building, she's kind of our steady Eddie. Even on days when she isn't subbing, she will call our admin assistant and ask if we're doing okay, if coverage looks good. Just know that she'll come in if we need her. So, and I think everyone probably knows this gal. Renee, will you come on up and get your award, please? All right, at this time, Mr. Johnson, I've worked with Mr. Johnson, as we've talked together in the same building. I've been the assistant principal in the building while he's taught, now I'm in principal in the building while he's teaching. And I felt like it was high time to get him in front of you guys, so you can see the good work he's doing. He's really grown this program. He works really hard with these kiddos, you want to hear some very fascinating conversations, you go in the Spectrum room and the kiddos are in there. And he's really, he's stretching their brains every day, and teaching them how to think outside the box. And they're gonna talk a little bit about what they do in the class, and then some of the students are gonna talk about what specific grade levels are doing right now for their Spectrum projects.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
So, start you guys off with a little bit about how the program in general. So Spectrum's the name of our gifted program. We test folks in according to the state regulations for qualifying folks. It exists, yes. So, why it exists, well, so enrichment, which is, you know, the intervention on the higher end of the curriculum, is something that takes a lot of time. You can do a twenty-minute activity to address a concern in a subject a lot easier, and a lot more realistically than you can enrich and go above and beyond a challenge in that same amount of time. The idea of it being a gifted program is kind of a misnomer, you know, everybody wants a gift. And a lot of folks assume the gifted programs for like the smartest kids, highest kids, most creative kids, and that just simply isn't the case. The best way, I would say, to describe it would be the folks, and I mean, this sounds almost sapting generic, but it's the folks who think differently. It's a very potentially high achieving group, but it's also a traditionally underachieving group. About forty percent of graduates are achieving below their capability traditionally, and that's because they face, in addition to their mathematically advanced intellect, that comes with some difficulties. Their intelligence masks those to some extent, but they're still very real things folks deal with. And giftedness often presents itself as traits of things that are diagnosed like ADHD, autism, this big list of things here. So we kind of learn to take advantage of those gifts, those positive traits, and learn to deal with the kind of the drawbacks and some of the social emotional difficulties. So, long story short, here TLDR version. Our big focus really is on critical thinking and then affective development. So just like we talked about before, growing those folks who are mathematically, have potential to excel, building those critical thinking abilities, and then also, you know, working on communication is a real big one. A lot of gifted folks think differently, and therefore explain things and handle explanations differently. So they, over time, they find frustration and explain themselves because they understand things in a different way. So we work on kind of operating within those bounds. I have my folks here explain some of the things we do in class to you, some things we do amongst all grade levels, and the first thing to talk about is debate. Every grade level does those, we prepare and then do debates together as a group. Obviously, it looks a lot different for second grade than it does for eighth grade. There are some other products that only certain grade levels do, based on grade level curriculum. So I'm gonna let them explain to you their projects. Now, some of these, I made these slides, I made it knowing what the whole project is over the course of the whole year, whereas they know the November version. So I may jump in and help out some things, but if you go to the next slide and start, start thinking about it.
It's six thirty. Right? I mean, okay.
Go on, you.
Debate is something we do, like, I would say like, to like, I don't know, what is like four? He just plans debates often, just like puts it in lessons. Um, so. Um, so. We use evidence on our debate, and elaboration, and communication. Um, and we have, we have like a score sheet, I guess, to show how well we did that, and stuff, so, yeah.
So evidence and elaboration are two things, I just, we hammer it constantly, just being able to explain everything you do, everything you say, being able to elaborate, you kind of get those things. Of course, no one is wearing one right now, but we've got wristbands that say evidence on the one side, elaboration on the other, red city colors, just kind of keep hammering that home, just, it's that communication piece. You can have the best idea in the world, it's wasted unless you can get people to listen or articulate it well, so one of the things we focus on during that.
So we search, so what you do is you, you research something up, and then, at the end of the year, you go on, so you gather research to support, and then at the end of the year, you present it to the whole Spectrum class.
What's your project, my friend?
What's your project?
My project, it was last year, it was softball, and then this year, it was making a video game.
So this is a choice-based project, where they, a lot of, the one thing that a lot of gifted folks kind of deal with is some pretty, pretty regular occurrences of burnout. So I try to incorporate as much choice as I can. So they, the big project every grade level does is this one here where they pick a topic of their choice, as long as it makes school appropriate and reasonable, of course. They, we practice lateral reading and fact-checking, identifying good reliable sources. They use that expertise to come up with some ideas, some new thing that didn't exist before them, and make that thing happen, follow the engineering design process, make the thing, test it, improve it, and then present it to each other at the end of your Shark Tank style, where they are like presenting to investors. It's really fun to see someone's technique, so who else has got an idea they want to share their idea for? What are you doing this year?
Um, well, I didn't really do something that's like not invented, I did chinchillas because they're like my favorite animal. As soon as I got one, I'm like, chinchilla. I was a chinchilla this year, or probably.
Good deal.
I'm doing using, like, you know, like, you know, a long car, right? I'll just put on my helmet.
You go on. Oh, dog food.
Um, dog food, that, um, all dogs can eat, a dog food that all dogs can eat, whether the, the chicken, or meat, they're all that.
Sure, so hypoallergenic dog food, hot dog food, we made a hot dog, at least ten folks picked and made dog food over the years. They don't really like their meat, I guess, but that's a good, that's a good one.
It's like dogs think every night.
We do, we can go ahead, we'll do that.
In my session, we pick a animal, any like kind of mammal, or really any animal. We don't, we wait till pets or dogs until about like middle school, because they're, which are complicated, and especially smaller, like bigger animals and more complicated animals, we do larger groups, so then we can like save, save, like, then you only have to buy one for the same money. And we have a couple, and the one I'm doing this year is a dogfish. And we like, we have a, we have a whole slide, we have to do our anatomy and physiology, and then we also have an organizer where we put the organs and specific parts of the organizer. And we can, we get, last year we did houseplants for like communication and stuff, and that's what we got from last year, and then this year, I don't really know what we're doing with it. Oh, houseplants, definitely, but, and we dissect the animal after all of our research at the end of the, I wouldn't say end of the year, but about, a little bit, like, last year we did at the end of the year, but sort of to the middle of the year.
He's right. So they, I mean, they research all year specimens, and then dissect them, it's a very smelly week, but they learned a lot, it's a cool, it's a cool experience, something they look forward to every year. And the whole, the idea of the organizer, where it's like capitalizing again, that was a kid's idea, where they made a, like, on a piece of paper, put like boxes that fit each organ, and as they remove them, sort of, to make sure like they identified everything, so that kind of stuff.
At the, at the end of the day, they always play a game, and we, what we can do is we can elaborate, and we can do, we can, we show evidence of what we want to do, and then we, it's team-focused, so we have to like show our team the evidence we have, so that they can choose what you want.
So I mean, it's just my, like, play games, but they do it as teams, so they have to, in addition to like the normal problem solving and critical thinking, and, you know, needed to formulate a strategy and constantly be adapting it, they are working as teams, so they've got to not only do all those things, but convince their teammate who also has ideas, that their idea is the one they want to go with. It gets pretty heated, but we ended up having some pretty good conversations around it. You got it. So you guys came here in the back. So second grade this year, we've gotten a few different kind of versions of similar projects in the past, but this year, they're, they're breaking down villains, so we came up with a list of different villains from literature that they all kind of knew about ahead of time, and we'll be adding more as the year goes on. Essentially, they're just taking their plots and kind of breaking them down, and really critically thinking about like what their chance of succeeding was, what ended up getting in their way, what, kind of where they're at now, so like the final result of their, of their plot, and kind of just comparing. So at least it's a pretty interesting and pretty heated debates of like, no, Ursula should be the worst, because she, you know, almost succeeded, but no, it's, it's interesting, they get pretty heated, it's good.
Our project's about creating an ecosystem, a future without collecting the ecosystem. We need an ecosystem and trusting existing animals, adaptations, relationships, minerals, most of the creatures.
That's it, just like you said, you said it perfectly, man. They take, they take an ecosystem that exists, research animals that really exist in that ecosystem, adaptations that they have to survive, and then create an animal that can be inserted in the ecosystem without wrecking it, which, you know, most ecosystems are pretty delicate, so that's a pretty tough, it's a pretty tough thing to do. Well, Stephanie?
For abstract art, we create meaning in like original art using symbolism and discussion.
Pretty straightforward. Go ahead, you can add on.
We, you said that at the end of the year, we, after we've done all of our abstract art, we do a, like a, yeah.
It'll just think about a big thing.
Yeah, that's accurate, yeah, I mean, it makes it sound like less than what it is, but, yeah, it's a fun one to see what they come up with. It's abstract art, it's, you know, it means different, different things to different people, so it's interesting to kind of see their, like their interpretation of existing stuff, and then what they can come up with. Like as, as we, they have this discussion about like, here's what I think, you know, Philip meant, but this, it's, it's interesting.
And first grade, we have, first grade, we have a book club, we're reading Aragon right now, and, but we do about thirty pages, we have a week to read thirty pages, and then whenever we come back to class the next week on Wednesdays, we discuss like what happened during the chapters before. We discuss, he goes over just like simple, like important things throughout all the chapters. And then we discuss, we can like about what important things, and we ask questions. And then we, a big thing is we make predictions, like what will happen in the future of the book, and we're just reading that right now, and then are we gonna read the whole thing this year?
All right, I think that is us, any questions from anybody?
Go ahead, Erin.
I don't have any questions, but I was just wondering if I could get your students to introduce themselves.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You guys all did such a great job, I want to be able to put names for the faces.
Erin, did you say your name? This is Teddy.
Ethan.
And I think the gorgeous Ellie.
Thank you, everybody, for coming here. I have a question for Teddy. Who's your favorite villain? Who's your favorite villain?
Any questions?
That would absolutely bring it to that one, absolutely. I just have one question. Are spectrum prices, do those take place like for an hour each day or how does that work?
So uh third through fifth grade right now is a full day uh pull out and then uh second and middle school are half day.
Well, you guys smile for pictures made in the course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrell. Okay, next time, honey, you all can stay. The next thing's great, but if you need to leave, if you could tell me to suffer, feel free. Thanks, guys. Hey, Taylor, can you close the door, please? All right, next item on the agenda is Athletic Cost Share. Uh, Dr. Berger is going to lead the conversation and then I think either Amy or Paul are going to add to it.
I'm going to hand it off pretty much to Amy, but I'm going to tell you that uh the Dunnings were one of the first folks I've met whenever I came to the community. Uh, they've been super active, like I need to tell you, with the Booster Club, but uh Amy and Paul were both uh very, very involved in the props advocacy. And uh so they're very tuned into the project. And uh it started with a conversation about how the Booster Club could support uh some element of the new high school. And uh we started uh thinking about something that would impact all of athletics, you know, every, every athlete would have an opportunity. And we kind of settled at the weight room and that's where it started. And here's where uh perhaps the next step for it. So Amy, tell us about the proposal Booster Club's bringing to the, to the board tonight, please.
Thank you, Dr. Berger. Thank you, board members. I appreciate you guys giving us uh the opportunity to speak a little bit about this and share some details. Um, yes, my name's Amy Dunning. I am the president of the Athletic Boosters. My husband and Kim Reeth are also here, represents uh as Athletic Booster members. Um, obviously, we all understand that undertaking a huge cost construction of a new high school has um lots of needs and some needs don't get taken care of during the actual construction phase. And when it came down to identifying a way that the Athletic Boosters could still be a partnership with the construction efforts, um but obviously focusing on our athletes, um it was both Dr. Berger and David Evans who brought forward the weight room concept. And that is obviously an area where all athletes can go to better themselves regardless of what sport they may be participating, including some of our um, the dance and cheer teams that aren't necessarily labeled as true sports, but are beneficial to improve themselves by way of getting stronger and, and improving themselves for their craft. Um, so the weight room was something that it took the boosters a good couple of number of months to um really land on something that we felt was going to be a project that was not difficult, not too um taxing on labor hours of members because as we all know, the Booster Organization is a volunteer organization, so volunteerism is a hard thing to find um time for among numbers of people. And so there was a, a handful of us, including the current um officers, myself, Jen Hamilton, Molly Love, Jody Van Oyston, of course, Kim and Paul who are here, who had the idea of a paver project. And this was something that very quickly settled into our hearts as a passion element for us. We felt a paver project is something any one of us has probably gone somewhere and seen it being done, whether it be Walt Disney World or the zoo or a park or even other schools. You've seen um this paver element be a part of, of a new area. And so from a passion perspective, what you don't see on these piece of paper that's in front of you related to the, the specifics of this, is the passion that the boosters are bringing to this project. Um, we want to make sure that the, there's a, a rich history in Red City. Many of you are aware of that, that extends not just with the current folks that are here in the school district, the, the parents, the families, but there's a rich history with our alumni. And so what the current boosters really feel like is a paver project is going to be very successful just from that feeling of the heart. We feel like we've got connections with both the community, we see the community involved in the school all the time. Um, we've seen the community and both current and alumni involved in our golf tournament. That has grown over the last five to six years. We've sold out the last two years. So this is something that we feel there's a passion for with our current members and we feel it's going to be a very successful thing. Um, and so in order to make this successful, we know that the weight room itself is not um at a cost that we can do all by ourselves. We cannot give um a pledge to the district for the entire cost, which is why we're bringing forward a cost share proposal to you. This is a sh- a proposal that says, um according to the estimate from Evans and Dr. Berger, that the weight room will be about an eighty thousand, the equipment, excuse me. The equipment in the weight room will cost to fund the new one at the high school at about eighty thousand dollars. And we, the boosters, want to put forward to you guys a pledge of forty thousand dollars towards that weight room. Allow us then with that pledge to have the weight room be a sponsored element by the athletic director, uh, not director, Athletic Boosters. People here. Anywho, just that we would um, the Athletic Boosters would have our signage um on that weight room so that they knew uh ongoing uh Red City students that we had a partnership with you all in that room. So the cost share would be um us selling the pavers. We would do the work, um obviously throughout the entire community, anybody who's um got passion for this particular new school and the, and our district in total would be able to help sell these. But we'd take on the um, the, the specifics in making sure we understood um the logistics of the construction. I mean, I'm working directly with obviously Dr. Berger. I am far removed from the details of the construction, but he has agreed to partner with me so that we can understand um how the three different areas that have been identified, how we're going to execute that. Um, I'm happy to ask or answer any questions if you have specifics on it. But I really just want to let you know that we've identified three areas. One being the grand entrance into the sports complex as an area where we're going to identify pavers to be sold for. Those pavers will um clearly have a higher price tag. They're going to also be the bigger ones because they are at the entrance of the entire sports arena um and auditorium, not auditorium, um, losing the word. Anywho, the, the band and the soccer and um track and all the sports will use that area, but that will be the grand entrance. And then there is a section of papers that have also been identified near the um
Stadium aisles.
Stadium aisles, yeah.
I called them about five different things.
Well, and on the backside of, uh, near those one side of the bleachers. So um what I, there's going to be fluidity to this project and what I can also assure you is that I will be very much communicating with you any changes or um elements that would, just like the normal construction process of the school. You'll be hearing from me or representatives from the boosters on changes as this project goes along. But we're taking this on as a, as a passion project and you can be rest assured that we're going to, I feel very confident that just in what we've identified as our initial game plan for those um area at the beginning of the sports stadium, we're going to more than likely be able to cover our pledge to you and find ourselves um with the ability to consider extra beyond that, which we don't know what that looks like, whether that's something that the boosters can obviously use towards the concession stands at the new stadiums or whether we come back and we partner again. I don't know, but I, I feel really confident about this passion side of it. And um anyway, I'm looking forward to your support, but also if you've got questions, please, I'd be happy to answer whatever questions you might have. And I think I missed, let me share one more specific thing. Um, oh, no, I did, the eighty and the forty, there it is, fifty fifty. I said that part. Had to remember if I did or not.
Heidi, you got any questions for Amy? Kyle, you got any questions for Amy?
Austin, I don't have any questions, but I just want to express how excited and happy it makes me for the district and the community to partner on and endeavoring. And the, the boosters are the pulse of the community in terms of athletics, both within the district and within the community, and I cannot be more proud of this initiative. So Amy, thank you so much for organizing this. Beau, if you're in the room, thank you so much for having us from an AD standpoint.
I'll go first, uh, move around this way because I made you go first last night.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I, I called Amy last night and a couple of concerns I had with the proposal, uh, to go back to the proposal. So there was the, the hundred dollars for the eight by four. Um, are you sticking with the hundred dollars or are you going to go to a hundred fifty?
Uh, because it's identified as projected, I don't know. Um, I think that you gave me along with talking with Paul and Kim just in the last twenty-four hours, I think there's um valid reason to consider one fifty. Um, that's going to be something I take back to the boosters at our next meeting and propose and see what the group says. Um, just because I've, I've gotten the understanding that projects that have gone out within our community or happened within our community where four by, similar four by eight, same size has been one fifty. So um I think there's room to have that as a discussion.
Well, I think, well, the reason I bring it up is because, you know, I'm going to sign this document tonight and it's going to say a hundred dollars in there. And then if you all decide to sell them for one fifty, then, you know, I just don't, I want people to understand that this, that that hundred dollars is a initial proposal. It's not necessarily the final cost.
Sure.
So
And, and to speak to that, you know, Austin, one of the things is we will, we are doing the work, the boosters, of securing the company who's going to um identify the paver sizes and the engravings for us. Um, this is, we don't know if we're going to get sixteen by sixteen. We know four by eight. Four by eight is a common uh size out there. We don't know yet if we're going to get sixteen by sixteen. Um, we think twelve by twelve might be the other potential size we get. So we do have a couple of fluid details as part of this, which is why I kind of mentioned a little bit ago. Happy to bring back the changes to this product, project with you guys so that everybody is always aware of the numbers, um, the details related to it. Happy to be open communication.
Okay. That was the only question I got. I just wanted to make sure that when the people read a hundred and five hundred or whatever, that, that may not be the final price. There you go. Uh, I'm done. Beth?
No questions. I, I agree with Colin, but I love the partnership. And I always love a paver project. I think it adds a lot of character and good community spirit and heart and history.
Absolutely.
Um, and of course, I think it's a great thing that we can ensure our weight brand is
Give me goosebumps. Can you keep going?
Sorry. No, I think it, I think it's a great thing, yes.
What's the timeline to have these sold and, and, and made and, and ready to be laid out?
Sure. I don't have a hundred percent of this for you, Dave, but um in talking with um Chris today, excuse me, Dr. Berger, after his meeting with the construction team today, he did say that, um, if I may, oh, can you, um, could you go put the map up for me, Elizabeth? Um, the, the first product, the first area that is um the one I was identifying being entrance into the stadium, this is going to be our first area of concentration. Um, Chris was, Dr. Berger was able to inform me today that um right now they're saying concrete will go down about uh April of next year, which is the first time I had a date shared with me. Um, ideally, yes, I would love to have that full section sold in time so that they can put them down. I don't know if that's truly realistic, given this is the first endeavor of said project. Um, but ideally, because of um January, excuse me, oh, twenty-five, because of classrooms coming in at twenty-five, I would like to see at the very least that this is a full, this particular section is completely in place when the school opens in January of twenty-five. Um, beyond that, I don't have a lot of specifics, but I'll be happy to take recommendations if you have any.
Uh, and I guess my next question would be for Dr. Berger. What happens if, if say only half of that section gets sold?
Yeah, the, uh, and I've also, and I didn't introduce you two because uh but Brandon is here to fill some questions if we need to too. She's been, we've been working with her a lot. But they actually lay the pavers down uh unetched or unlazered. So it's going to be solid there, you know, they, they will have a change order that will come through the uh reconstruction, uh, that will create the depression for that. And then the pavers are actually installed, so there's no hazard there or anything. And then uh I'm, I'm sure what the Booster Club will do is do this in waves, so maybe their, their goal is to sell that first section. And I think that's going to be the hottest one, you know, it's going to be pretty popular, I think, out of the, out of the chute. And then they'll pull those pavers up, have them uh lasered and reinstalled. Okay. Yep. So there's never, and of course, we'll do that in times where we're going to be using that entrance or whatever. I don't know what the turnaround on that is, but any idea, Brandon, in three weeks maybe? For
Laser though?
Yeah. Get a laser.
I would think so.
Well, I know when we did it for Tribute to Veterans, you know, we, you know, they sold them, they pre-sold them. I think, you know, if you get them pre-sold, then they come etched. And then, then that saves, then you just lay them down etched.
One time.
Yeah, then it's a one-time handling of the break. Um, and then they did, there's in waves too up there. If you go to, if you go to the Warrens and Tribute to Veterans, um, you know, when they, when they sold those papers, they sold them in waves. They, they did two phases. Um, and then basically then uh they picked them up and then, you know, had, had them etched or whatever and then did what they had to do. But um I think if you really concentrate on selling that first wave, then um you, you get them sold, it's so much less handling. And then the other question to you is going to be, I know the Tribute to Veterans up there, they use sand between them? And then I know now they're going back now and they're having to, you know, basically redo the sand between them. Because they're so often, I'm assuming that's what we're going to be doing here, sand and we'll have to redo them ever so often?
Yeah, I think it would depend on what type of pavers specifically we're going to end up using. Um, but there will be like a drainage pit that the pavers sit in. Um, and so like any rainwater would be drained out of there, you know, so it, it might have some sand in it. That's what I'm getting at.
Then that's what they have to do and they're having like, and there's sand between them and they have to go out there.
A little maintenance, too.
There's maintenance, though. But I mean, you do it once every six, seven years or whatever, but there's maintenance. So the initial design would be to have concrete in this place originally?
Well, it's how it's spent right now.
For the pavers?
Yeah, and so then sometime, a, you know, pending border portal of bond construction will start working on the change order that would come out in the next sixteen, nineteen days, probably. Yep. Because it's, it's planned, the flat work back there is planned for April. So we got to get ahead of that.
Sure. I have no other question. Mary?
All I can say is thank you guys. Thank you so much. Uh, as a, a ex, a ex Booster member, myself, an officer, and uh we worked on building the concession slash Bose Field House, you know. So that, that was a big undertaking at that time, too. I know, you know, you guys work hard, so thank you very much.
Um, you know, that, except for all the Booster membership stuff, I have not been a member of Booster.
I can tell you're my next meeting.
Yes, yeah, yep, yep, yep. So anyway, um, no, thank you. I, you guys do such, so much good stuff for, for our kids and our, for our community and really appreciate it. You guys are everywhere. Um, and so it's, it's always nice to um see that passion still, um, you know, even, you know, you're not at all the, at all the volleyball games anymore. Um, but yeah, it's, it's nice to see that involvement and that everything that the boosters um do for our kiddos.
I have a question more for um Dr. Berger. The other forty thousand dollars, how much had we planned on that? Like, is that something that we had already had earmarked in our budget?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question. And so what we've got is a contingency and uh our contingency for the project, our project contingency, the, the amount of money that we're, we don't have to use for change orders is what we had planned, but the priority is furniture, uh, then technology and then some of this type of stuff. So uh not to be too uh cryptic there, but yeah, we, it would, we certainly wanted to uh do the weight room, you know, and, but that is all pending on how well the project rolls out. This, whenever you get a dollar for a dollar, this certainly raises the priority of this and kind of commits us to making sure that we put forty thousand and kind of commits us to making sure that we put forty thousand dollars in our budget, that's going to be committed to this project. But I think, wow, if anybody else wants to give us a dollar for a dollar, we'll raise your priority, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a great deal.
Thanks so much.
Sure. If Heidi does want to say something?
Go for it. Heidi, you want to say something?
Sorry about that, guys. My screen went black, and then I couldn't pull it back. Zoom's not normal. Anyway, I just want to say thank you, guys, very, very much for stepping up to the table and making, you know, this, this, it's going to be just this much cooler because you guys stepped up to the table. And that's both things, the weight room and the stadium. So I also agree with Beth, the paper projects are incredible. I think that's really something interesting to see when everybody walks in, and I really like that. But if you guys need any help selling pavers, I'm here. I just think this is really awesome, and I'm so happy to be able to, you know, claim the boosters as a partner.
These would make great Christmas presents for anybody out there shopping.
You're putting me on a timeline.
Everybody on a timeline. Yeah, if I, uh, pretty hard.
Maybe next year.
On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you very much for doing this.
Sure.
We appreciate it.
May I before? I want to reassure all of you, and Heidi and Kyle, as alumni, yes, I will be hitting you up for your alumni connections, absolutely. I just want you to be rest assured, you guys do understand that my husband and I do not have kids in the district anymore, but this is a passion project that maybe you won't see us at the volleyball games or in the concession stands anymore, but this is a project, rest assured, you're going to see us, whether we finish it to completion, or we find the right people to take in and step in and finish it, you know, say it takes five years, for whatever reason, we'll find the right people to make sure this comes to completion. I'm not the person to get up and ghost and leave details just falling, and that's not me. So just please rest assured that this is a project we will see a C to completion.
Thank you very much. Any other questions before we do a motion? Okay, we need a motion to approve the Wright City R2 athletic booster cost share as presented in the board pack.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the 23 audit. Dr. Berger?
Yeah, are we dialing in our auditor? So FY23 audit, you know, we kind of close out the books in our ledger. The next thing in sequence is, in August, we submit our ASBR. You'll remember, we did a brief presentation on that a couple of months ago, and somewhat the final nail in the coffin is the audit, and that's where we're at.
Hello?
Hi, Madison.
Hey.
This is Elizabeth with Wright City R2 School Board. You've got everybody on the line here.
So Madison's first go with this, you'll, you'll, remember Rebecca Baker had been the one presenting the audit previously, but Madison, you're live right now, so we'll just turn it over to you, and you can direct us where you need us to go. And they are looking at a electronic copy from their, from their board docs.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone, I'm Madison Moore with KPM CPAs out of Springfield, Missouri. Thank you so much for having me tonight, and I can't see you guys, so if you have questions, you can speak to us. But we have first, 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 2023, and expect to discuss those with you. So we'll get started on page three, if you want to follow along in your copy that you have there. The first engagement we perform is the financial statement audit, so we perform an audit to determine if the district's financial statements are presentarily in all material respects in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting, and then we issue an opinion based on these results. So the district has received an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best you can get. And next, we'll take a look at page 11. Do you want to go there? Right there. Okay, so here we have the statement of receipts, disbursements, and changes in fund balances. Essentially, this is the income statement for all your funds. So we'll just take a quick look at the general fund here. So total receipts were up about seventeen percent from the prior year, and it looks like taxes increased about seven percent, and then also the district received about five hundred and seventy thousand more in transportation funding as opposed to the prior year. Total disbursements were up just about nine percent. There wasn't really any big jump in any one specific category, just kind of small increases across the board. So total increase in your general fund was about 1.15 million, bringing ending fund balance to about 6.5 million. And then your reserve in your general fund and special revenue fund was at 28.18% this year. So a little over three months. Basically, this means that the district didn't get any additional revenues after June 30th. The district could still pay your normal operating expenses, the salaries, benefits, things like that, for about three months. So we typically recommend around 25%, but ultimately, it's up to the district to decide where they're comfortable with that reserve being. The debt service size decreased about 550,000, so ending fund balance at about 1.9 million. And then we'll take a look at the capital project fund as well. The total receipts were up about 4 million from the prior year. Taxes increased about 930,000 in the capital project fund, but you did increase your levy in fund four as opposed to the prior year. And then also, your interest income was way up. Interest rates were a lot better this year. We saw that across all of our school districts, and then also the district received a $2 million donation related to the athletic field at the new high school. Total disbursements were up about 8.4 million due to building the new high school, obviously. So we expect those to go up. Total decrease in the capital project fund, about 2.8 million, bringing ending fund balance to about 54.4 million. And then we will go to page 12, so just one page over. Here we have the notes in the financial statements. These are a required part of the financial statements, and they just give some more detailed information on your significant accounting policies, your future debt service payments, and other items you might see in the financial statement. So we're not going to go over these tonight, but I do encourage you to read these in conjunction with the financial statement. So the second engagement that we perform is the federal compliance audit, and if you'll flip to page 41, we will, just talk about that briefly.
Where are they?
So page, okay, perfect. Page 41 is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So anytime a government spends for the 750,000 in federal funds, that entity is required to have a federal compliance audit. So this is where it lists out all those expenses that the district had by where they came from, by the department, and then also the specific program. So page 42 has the total, so the total federal awards expended this year were about 4.1 billion. And then if we go to page 44, kind of summarizes the single audit. So we did audit only one program this year as a major program, and that was your education stabilization fund. And I'm happy to report that we have no compliance or internal control findings related to the financial statement audit and the federal award audit. So that is good news. And then the last engagement that we do is related to the state compliance examination, which will start on page 47. So every year, DESI releases a list called the Schedule of Selected Statistics, which is an awful, the district receives funding based on information that is submitted to DESI throughout the year, like attendance, transportation, free and reduced counts, and also some state laws that the district is required to follow. And then we test these areas, and we report to DESI if there is any non-compliance. So there was one instance of non-compliance this year. The district was not adequately collateralized at SMV Bank at various times throughout the year, so we just recommend getting with the bank and making sure that your collateralization is being monitored throughout the year to ensure that your deposits are secured at all times. But that was the only thing. Nothing else related to that. So that is all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, I got a question about that collateralization.
Sure.
So obvious, and first of all, thank you for finding that. I mean, obviously, it's not good to hear that from the school board perspective, but, you know, audits are detective, you know, things, and you detected it, and that's, I appreciate that. What could we have done as a school district, you know, in order not to, in order for that not to occur? There's obviously something we didn't do, you know, as one, it was something else, but what could we have done to better monitor that?
The only thing I can really suggest is the bank can provide you with a pledged securities report as of any date, because the collateral has a market value that changes all the time. So you could just ask for those monthly, or every couple of months, once a quarter, maybe, and just making sure that your deposits are adequately collateralized.
Okay, but beyond that, you don't have any other recommendations?
Just making sure that the bank understands that your deposits need to be fully collateralized.
Fair enough. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the FY23 audit?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, thank you very much for your time. Thanks, Madison.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the FY24 budget amendment number one. Yeah, we're going to bring Ms. Klaus up here, and since it's her second year, we're just going to put her on an island up there, not give her any help at all, but take over.
Good evening, yeah. So for our first budget amendment, we've increased revenue 1.3, approximately 1.3 million dollars. Some of the things that she said in FY23, or applicable to FY24, interest rates are still high, so we had to increase our rings on investments. We changed around our tax rate a little bit, and AV came in a little bit higher than expected, so that increased about 363,000 dollars. And then a good majority of the rest of the increase was due to grants, so that's always a good thing, that we get all those opportunities that we can. So forty, about forty percent of that 1.3 million dollars was in grants. Then on the flip side, with those grants, come expenses. So there again, with the increase of 1.1, and expenses, about forty percent of it was grants. We did increase a little bit in some salaries for some FTEs, and about 400,000 dollars there. And then we do have a lot more, not a lot more, but a few more participation and career ladder than we had the past, about a hundred thousand dollar increase there to the budget. So that's all I have. Any questions?
I am assuming you've got new tasks on your to-do list once a month, or?
I do, yes. I've been in contact with the bank, and yes, they are going to send me a monthly report.
That's good. Anything else?
Dr. Berger, so the delta between revenue and expenses is about 260 thou or so. Are we looking at places we could potentially apply those monies, or are we just going to stash the weapons? Sorry, I kind of put you on the spot here.
No, no, that's okay. No, typically, you know, we're going to budget pretty conservatively. Our expenditures are going to be, you know, much more on the dot. Revenues, we make no, you know, we don't hide from the fact that I'm pretty conservative. Now, I think one place that I reported to the board that I was a little more aggressive was ADA. We didn't, we did look at that. I think we can expect probably some kind of adjustment in ADA, but that would be the only place, probably in our budget, that we'd find a revenue where we were more aggressive with. And I think we will probably be aggressive with ADA in terms of anticipating the growth, because you can fall back on the best of your previous two years, but you always have an opportunity to project what you're going to have on the, on that current year. And because we anticipate growth, I think that would become probably the norm for us in, you know, the foreseeable future. But in terms of, oh goodness, Kyle, your question was, do we have a plan for those dollars? Probably, at this point, no, it's a net. Think right now, for the current fiscal year, all of our needs are met, and we'll hope that that holds. I will remind you, and, you know, I don't think we're at much threat of that this year, but the vast, well, a large part of my career has been spent being the CFO for districts where the threat of withhold's at the end of the year were always cloud looming over us. So, you know, there's, I'm optimistic that the financial forecast, you know, talking three or five years out, there is no doubt we're plateauing in terms of revenues, state revenues. I think we're going to see a soft landing of being propped up by federal dollars, and that's, you know, from the state and the school district. So when things get, I'll say, normal, that cloud kind of gets darker again, because if the state doesn't have the money to push it down to us, they're going to make withhold's. And some of those things that, that have been funded, because the state is flush with cash, career ladder, you know, when we brought on career ladder, we said, you know, we're optimistic, short-term, that career ladder is going to be funded, but I can tell you, when things get rocky at the state, that's going to be one of the, the things that they look at, at not funding. Transportation, you heard from the audit, the transportation revenues went up, that we anticipated that. We even hedged bets on that it was going to, because we had good, we thought we had good information to anticipate that. But I think if I was hedging my bets moving into the next five years, there'll be a time that transportation is cut. The vast majority of my career, well, my entire career, it was never funded. The first time it was ever funded was this 75%, which is considered full funding, of fiscal year FY20, or fiscal year 23. Trying to think of another categorical that might be in harm's way. Transportation, oh, let me give you a really good example.
Preschool grant.
Preschool grant, thank you. That's, that's perfect. When we brought that preschool grant in, I told you, DESI's line is that that's a one-year grant, but the buzz is that they believe that they're going to try to move that into the formula. I think they've got a good chance of doing that, moving into FY25, but when things get rocky, if they don't get that into the formula, that will be a categorical that will be easily to identify and catch money for the state. So you're just always working, you know, whenever you're dealing with public dollars, kind of in this cautious state of trying to anticipate what the next one to three years are going to look like. So I'm certainly an advocate of budgeting conservatively, you know, preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. And I think this year will be, this year will end that, and when things end good, you do net a little bit of net at the end of fiscal year. That was a long answer. Sorry, Kyle, that was.
Aye. I appreciate, I appreciate all of the, all of the examples, and honestly, as you're listing this off, the only thing I can think of is that, is all of our other districts in the state that are so reliant on that payroll grant right now, because if that goes away from them, man, I just, I can't imagine those board members in those districts.
Yeah.
But thank you.
How did I miss that one, Kyle? I guess because we don't use it, but yeah, there's more than half the districts in the state are using the state minimum salary grant, and it's, it's a year to year, so that's just, you know, in the, in the public sector, that's what we deal with.
Any additional questions on the budget amendment?
Just, just one, and this comes from the MSBA report. The lady Linda, I think that was her first name. She talked about, you know, OSR funds, we're done with that money now, but she also said something about DESI waivers. There won't be any more DESI waivers. What is that?
I don't know, I didn't catch that. Now, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Like, I just mentioned that you can use the previous two years on your ADA, and of course, to simplify that, it's ADA times the state addict's duty target, so a number that the state gives us, times noses, right? Times kids. Right now, there was a pandemic waiver that allowed us to go back and use our best year to FY20.
Yes.
And so that waiver disappears. It doesn't apply to us, but there's certainly, overall in the state, ADAs went down, so school districts more, more often than not, have lost ADA. We're in a fairly unique situation where we're growing, or back to growing school, growing students, growing ADA. So that was probably, and I apologize if I didn't catch that, but I think that's probably, since she's the finance MSBA guru, I'm thinking that's what she was.
She said DESI waivers.
Okay.
I haven't, I don't know that I've heard that term before, and that was, that doesn't necessarily. apply to this.
So pandemic waiver, and it does apply to finance, but not to our school district. We're not planning on needing to use the waiver. I'm gonna put you on the spot. Did we use the waiver last year? Did we go back to twenty? No, it was close, right? But we came down the stretch where we're gonna use current year. Anybody else? Okay, she doesn't have any questions?
I'm good, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep.
I'm good, thank you.
No worries. I need a motion to approve the budget amendment number one.
Still moved. Second.
Second.
There's a motion and second. It wasn't Kyle. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Heidi, did you say yes? Let's go with six zero on that for now. All right. Next item on the agenda is the academic achievement report.
I said yes, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, seven zero on that. The next item on the agenda is the academic achievement report. Dr. Berger?
Yep, I'll throw this to Mr. Smith.
All right, so, yeah, I'm pretty excited about this even though, you know, some of the people in this room have commented on the length of this presentation and the number of slides. I will go through this as quickly as I can, but I think this is pretty important and I think there's some awesome stuff here for us to take a look at and I'm pretty proud of what we can accomplish. So first of all, what you're gonna see in this report, this is our EOC and MAP test data from the 2022, 2023 school year. It means the assessments that students took last year. Most of them took this during the spring testing window, although there may have been a few in the winter. This is definitely part of our APR accountability. This is the status level report when we get those scores. Okay, we will not know what kind of grade scores we got until we get the APR results. They're supposed to be in one of the next two months, but this is our status. Now, most of what I do, and I know there have been some questions on this, most of the way that I present this is always in measurement to the state average. So why do I pick a measurement to the state average and is that a good indicator? Is that something that is appropriate? Yeah, I think that is, it is a static place for us on which to base our performance. We couldn't go use scale scores because those change. You can't really use the MPI results because the MPI results are different depending on the test and the grade level. And so we can always, there will always be a state average. And there's always going to be a level on which that the rest of the school districts are measured. And so we can always tell where are we in relation to that. And that's why that is picked. I know there were some questions on that. Well, next slide. Okay, we give, this is all pretty hopefully standard everyone, we give nineteen assessments. We give seven at West, third, fourth, fifth grade ELA in math. We give a fifth grade science exam. We give seven at the middle school, six, seventh and eighth grade ELA in math and one eighth grade science. And we give five at the high school, algebra one, algebra two in English, two in biology and American government. Last year, we did have a group of middle school students, their freshman this year, we had a group of eighth graders who got on the bus and went over to the high school and took algebra one with one of our teachers. But their scores, when you look at this report, accounted with the eighth grade cohort in the high school. So a couple of real quick things to talk about. In the past, almost every year, I have always presented, or prior to me, people always presented the percentage of students who scored advanced to proficient. And that was always the metric. That was one of the things that in MSIP five, you could use to get measured for your APR or AYP was that. Through MSIP six, that went away and we're using just the MAP performance index only. Again, that's a better indicator because it also gives you data on what the students at the bottom are doing. If you're only taking what your kids at advanced proficient are doing, and that's your percentage, then you're really focused on that. So MPI gives you a little bit better metric overall. So it gives us details about students not many proficiency levels too. Each MPI is a score of five hundred. So for every kid who takes an exam, they're gonna get, they hit an advanced, they get five points. Proficient, they can get anywhere between four and four point nine nine, depending on how many questions they get right within that range. Basic is three to three nine nine and below basic is one, two nine nine. And so essentially, you take all those you got and then you divide it by the number of people who took it, multiply it by a hundred and that gives you an MPI score for grade level. So because we, MSIP six is used to the MPI, I know in the past, I've presented you like multiple years of past data. I'm just gonna focus on last year and this year, because those are the two in MSIP six that we have. So real quick, you can go to the next slide Elizabeth. Here's just a five-year review of that. This is pretty much using that advanced proficient percentage. In seventeen, we had eight of those assessments, eight of our assessments were above the state average. English two and algebra one were not there. We're not accountable that year, so we didn't have that, so there's seventeen. In eighteen, science were field tests, we had six score above the state average. In nineteen, three, twenty-one, eight. And then last year, if you remember this presentation, we had twelve. There were above the state average when you consider advanced and proficient, eleven when you did MPI. Algebra one was right on the cut line between both. On the next slide, I'll show you last year's data for us real quick. This is just the MPI, so we have eleven of our nineteen areas above them. Okay, go on. So now I'm gonna just start rolling through a little bit of what our schools did. Here's what third grade did this past year. In ELA, they were above the state average in both ELA and math. They were above the state average in spread performance and math performance and way above in some of those areas. So third grade has kinda knocked out the park, did a nice job with that. Next slide just shows you those two-year comparisons. Okay? And as you move forward through MSIP six, you'll hopefully start tracking this and then these cohorts. I didn't do a cohort look, this is just two-year report at this point. Really, our EL students in, in third grade were way above the state average in terms of math, below in ELA compared to other EL students. But again, third grade performance is extremely solid overall, really among the best performance in the district. A lot of that, I've gotta give credit, you know, to those Woods and those people with these two and our second grade team of West for getting students prepared and ready to step in. And our third grade team has been really phenomenal. We'll look at fourth grade. Again, fourth grade, we're looking at ELA and math performance above the state average. Spread was a little below, math was way above again. And we go to the next slide. There are those comparisons. And then, next one. EL performance, again above in math, below in ELA. Again, our fourth grade students demonstrated high levels of learning. I think if you go back and look since like 2017, 2016, when you look at ELA and math performance in the green, fourth grade is every year. It's pretty much year in and year out, we're above the state average in fourth grade. It's hard for me to go back and find a time when they weren't. So some of the most consistent performance that we get all the time. See what happens now, Mr. Smith is.
It'll be fine.
It'll be fine. Okay, we go to our fifth grade summary. ELA performance was quite a bit below the state average, but our math performance rebounded from the year before and was well above. But spread performance in both of those areas was well below the state average. Excited again about that.
So stop right there. So this is where a cohort example would have been good, because I would like to see what these kids did in fourth grade at ELA.
They were above the state average.
They were above, so we had a big dip between.
We had a big dip from fourth to fifth, yes. Okay. So we had a big dip. And I can talk a little bit about that in a moment. You know, science was below the state average and our EL performance in both was below the state average for those. So we can look at the charge for a second. Next slide Elizabeth. And there are those, but I wanna hit this analysis here just a little bit. We'll go one more slide. So I think we had some really solid performance here in math and among our special education students. But one thing I think that we need to make sure and think through is the prior year, for our 21, 22 data, that was pretty strong in fifth, we lost the majority of those teachers. So last year, 22, 23, four of the five teachers in that grade level were either new to our district, or new to teaching fifth grade, or new to teaching period. So we had an entire new team in there. And we have seen some pretty inconsistent, we have seen some pretty inconsistent performance around that. You know, they were in a model where the kids rotated by subject area. We eliminated that year to try to let the impact team process that's really worked well in third and fourth grade play out in fifth grade. And we'll see if that didn't do something a little different here for this year. So we are on a little different system than we've been on the past few years in fifth grade. And so third and fourth grade over, since we started impact teams, have been really strong. Fifth grade's just been a little up and down. And so going back to them all being one teacher and those teachers being able to collaborate in impact teams, we'll see what that does to the data next year. So overall, West, five of the seven tested areas were above the state average. Six of seven special education scores were below the state average, two of our EL scores above the state average. And again, all three levels of math at double-digit MPI points above the state average. And so like, we are excelling in math there, really strong performance on two of our three ELA exams. We've done some things in fifth grade to hopefully work on that. We know there's still a little work to do with our EL population, but there's a lot happening with that group. Dr. Staley leading some of the charge with that and we've got people in place at every building to do some of that work. So we'll go to the middle school. Sixth grade was really strong. You know, and this would be one, Austin, if I had the cohort looks, I just didn't wanna do it with two data points for these, but I mean, I could have. Fifth grade had been strong in these, but they even went up. So we went from fifth grade where they were strong to even stronger in sixth grade. So we saw jumps well above in sixth grade, both in math and ELA.
But this cohort of kids did not do well. Their fifth grade math scores were not.
They were, they were high in ELA, not really in math.
Not really in math, so they're, they recovered from that.
Yeah, they were about, you know, ten points above in ELA in fifth grade, jumped. They were below in math.
Okay.
The year before and jumped. And so, I mean, our spread performance there was over sixty-seven points above, was fed kids around the state did. So that was a pretty nice one you could see. The next one was charts, just compare six to six. And then we'll look at sixth grade, you know, very strong performance from last year's sixth grade students in both ELA and math. Spread performance was good as well, cohort growth in both. Math had been below this cohort in fifth grade. And really, fifth grade in math, you know, this has been a strong cohort for us. The only test that they have ever been below the state average in is, was in fifth grade math, I believe. So, but, you know, like I always like to show with the cohort trend lines for this group, they've still gone up. And they've kinda gotten better every year they've been with us. So strong group. Seventh grade was once again a struggle. I mean, that's what it is. Okay, we were well below in all areas. You can look next page at the charts and then the next page of those analysis. Again, that's drastic underperformance compared to the rest of the district. But I can tell you that three of the four cohort teachers who were on that team last year are not with us this year. And we have that group of sixth graders from last year who've always been high achieving in that. And we really believe that we have new staff members and leadership to make us, I think this is gonna be a really good turnaround. I think I've got it on a different slide somewhere, but I think Miss Back has had a pretty tremendous hiring season. Last year in the spring, we got veteran teachers in ELA math and science where we've lost people. And some people who have taught for many years successfully other places. So we're really excited about that, including bringing a staff member back who had taught this group when they were in fifth grade and achieved well, who went away to another district, thinking the four-day week would be good for him and wanted to come back to Wright City. So we're excited to get him back and he is doing really good things with them, so I think that's gonna be good next year. And again, eighth grade, man, we had some really strong performance in ELA in math in eighth grade. And if you will recall, our math performance when this group was in seventh grade was over sixty-two points below the state average. And in one year, we jumped to like thirty-seven above. They were about thirty points below in seventh grade in ELA to about eighteen points above. So our ELA and math teachers did some amazing work with that group. That does include obviously our eighth graders who took algebra one at the high school, but it would still be above even without them. Science performance was below, I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, and you can see our spread performance. And then there are multi-year comparisons. Eighth grade math has continued to be strong ever since back in the day when Mrs. Backus was rolling that and doing amazing things. Her proje has continued that work since she has left it. So our eighth grade analysis there, eighth grade math in ELA were among the highest-scoring areas in the district, some amazing cohort growth. Our math and spread students also scored above the state average compared to other AYP students. One of the things that you gotta remember about eighth grade science last year is that we had two different teachers teaching that. One left us mid-year and we put someone in there who was on a temporary certification. And so I think that's a pretty good group of students, but it's still pretty solid overall. And so I wanna say that the middle school, overall, next slide Elizabeth, four tested areas were above the state average, that's the best performance at the middle school since seventeen eighteen. Four of the seven special ed scores were above the state's spread averages. Five of the seven tested areas showed growth in the same test in 2022. The eighth grade students showed high rates of growth as a cohort. Middle school's going where it needs to go. I mean, it is, it is heading in the right direction and we have terrific people leaving that building. Now we'll look at the high school, EOC scores and analysis, starting with math. You know, algebra one again was above the state average. This is pretty awesome to me considering that, you know, we took about twenty eighth grade kids who all scored advanced, every one of them, and they don't count for this. So you take those kids out, they were still above the state average. Algebra two continues to be one of our strongest scoring areas year in and year out, district teacher of years in there. Spread performance in algebra one was below, but above in algebra two. There are multi-year comparisons. Okay, lots of degree there on those charts, the next one Elizabeth. And then we'll fly here to all the other ones. So we got English two, above again, government we were above, biology we were above, English two spread we were above, government spread we were above, biology spread we were above. So our high school is doing pretty awesome things, not just for regular kids, but for special ed populace as well. You can see the next one on those charts if you wanna look through those. Next slide there, and then we'll go one more. Here's our EL performance summary. And again, you'll notice, I know somebody may have asked, you know, why was, why did you not provide the EL performance summary for the middle school? That was not an accountable student group for us last year. We did not have enough students there for that to be an accountable group. We did at the high school and at West. So there's that data. Government day, that group was above, the other areas we were not. So the next slide please. So here are our totals, five of the five tested areas were above the state average. That's the second year in a row that the high school has done that. Four of five special ed scores were above the state average. Four of five special ed scores were above the state averages. One out of four EL scores were above the state averages. The Algebra I scores and that, that growth from last year, to me was pretty impressive when we took out all the kids who took it. We've got a very high numbers kids scoring proficient. Some of those MPI dips maybe in English II and government. It's simply the number of kids scoring advanced. Less than work that anyone's Brooks is working on now, but I mean, I, I think it's pretty awesome to say. Back-to-back years where every tested area is above the state average. So here's some of just the final considerations that I, that I have for taking questions. 14 of 19 assessed areas were above the state average, that's our highest district total since 2014. And I can go back two decades and only find one year that's better than this. So I think we have a lot to be proud of. West Elementary and the high school performance stayed high in both buildings. And we had a large number of turnover at West prior to that. To, to stay as high as they did, I think is pretty impressive. I think we have some really strong systems in place with our impact team structure to keep that high. Again, the middle school showed tremendous improvement. That's the best performance against its 1718 year, Mrs. Beckus, Mrs. Meadows are a great team. Going to keep that going, our special ed performance kind of pulled it out of the water. And so if you want to look at that next chart, there's the 22 again, we were 11 out of 19. And you flip the next one, and there's a whole lot more. A lot more, so I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. And so if you go on the last slide, here are my overall considerations, you know, we continue to move forward. That's three consecutive years of, of improvement in academic achievement. We have some really amazing teachers and staff members. I, I'm just impressed as I walk around and sit in impact team meetings and go into rooms and you know, one of those things that we talked about there, you know, you start seeing dips sometimes when we lose people or we have turnover. All the things that we can do to put systems in place are important, but the right teacher in the classroom with kids is where it's at. We continue to try to build those people up and train them and do our best with them, but boy, that's important. Our, our focus at the standards level, the middle school's really paying off. Mr. Brandon kind of started that this year, Mrs. Beckus is really rolling it this year. High school's continuing to excel and I, I just think that this is the time that we should be celebrating the success of our kids, our teachers, our administrators. You know, we don't have a breast on that, but at the same time, man, this is, this is awesome stuff. And I'm, I'm really proud of all the teachers. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to fill in those.
Heidi, any questions? Kyle?
Thank you Doug, I appreciate the explanation and I'm very excited about where we're going. We have some opportunities, but thank you.
Kyle?
I have no questions, Mr. Smith, just the, you know, the biggest appreciation to you, the principals, and primarily the teachers across the district on our overall improvement from last year. The district's moving in the right direction and these are very good results. So thank you to everybody that has been a part of this.
I just want to echo, I appreciate everything anybody's doing, especially the teachers in the classroom. I think they're coming off a couple of difficult years in terms of having to wear masks and stuff like that. And hopefully this slide will keep moving, moving forward, so kudos to everybody. Beth?
Good stuff here and yes, I agree with what else is said major, thanks to all our teachers and principals. And I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing at the middle school and the direction things are going there as well, so I think it's good.
Doug, I think I've asked you this three times before, so I apologize in advance. Was last year the first year that we had our monthly evaluate testing? That we have, like our, our first full year that that was implemented?
No, that's been in place for, you know, three or four years now.
Okay, okay, all right.
This would be the fourth year, I think, for Mitch Mark.
And, and everywhere, yeah. And some places we're doing it prior, others are not. It was not consistently used until like, you know, when we really started implementing the impact team model. We, we went to it a lot all, all across the board and it'd been hit or miss depending on the level or the area prior to that.
And those are structured to align with what the students will be tested on during.
Yeah, they're supposed to be, yes.
Okay, got it.
Dave, anything? Mary?
Just what everyone else says, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone. I, I go to state meetings and I say, we have the best staff and the best kids in, in the state of Missouri. And always like, yeah. I honestly do believe that and I, I'm always in awe of what I see, so thank you.
Karen, you have your final word.
Okay, all of those things, the, I especially love seeing our sped numbers doing what they've done for the past two years, couple of years. And the other half, the Brooks dynamic doing, that's a great job too, so thank you. Thank you for that and all of our administrators and teachers. So this is just a little, I was listening to this podcast this morning from Dwight from the office, Ray Wilson. And he was talking about the three things that you should, you know, do in prayer every day. One was asking for help, one was saying thanks, and one was appreciating the wow. And just kind of looking at this, that's, I, I hope that all of our teachers and our staff appreciate the wow of what they've, what you all have been able to do and the growth that you've been able to give our kiddos. And, and that's what I'm taking out of this is just a wow factor, that take a moment and appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we move on to the next agenda item? Good job, everybody. Did you want to add something?
No, just great job Doug, men, teachers, and it's also, it starts at the top. Board of Education, our focus has been on academic achievement. And I, I know you know that, but we, and we will continue to do that, so thank you.
We've got 41 slides.
What, what, too bad, was it?
42. 42 is good.
What, too bad, was it?
Pretty good.
21.
Okay, moving on.
You had the 20-minute over.
Moving on. Climate survey, Dr. Berger. I'm throwing this to colleague Dr. White.
Yeah, in your path, you'll see all, you'll see a different climate survey this year than you, you've seen in the past. So let's explain and, and give you a little history lesson here. So in the past, we've had a climate survey of just our staff members and that has morphed throughout the years. Last year was a little different in the fact that we were given the, the staff survey, kind of modified one, along with a parent one, because we thought M66 was coming down the pike and we were going to get ready for that. Well, this is what that is, if you notice all the different surveys that we gave out earlier this year. The first one was a parent survey towards the end of September, and I've got to thank Morgan. Morgan spearheaded the whole thing with all of her surveys. She worked with Dr. Skelly to make sure that we had our non-English speaking surveys available. We also had hard copies available of our buildings. And so the parent survey, we had about 322 responses on that. We also had our staff survey at the end of the month of September as well. We gave them some extra time at CSIP along with the rest of that week to get it done. And then for our support staff, they weren't there at the CSIP day, so we actually gave them and paid for them to stay on the clock on an early out Wednesday in order to get them to take the survey, because like I said, that survey has changed. You can see there's 62 items in there compared to about 10 or 15, which we used to have. So we had 173 of our staff take that survey. And then the new one for us this year is we have two different surveys for students. We had for grades three through five and then grades six through 12. And we had over a thousand of our kiddos take those surveys as well. I think our admin did a great job in their CSIP reports that's coming up. Kind of outlining building by building what they, what they did well in and what they're, they're looking with their leadership team to improve upon. I just want to talk about kind of district level, some of the things that Doug and Chris and I have talked about since getting the surveys back. If you notice in our, in previous surveys, we would talk a lot about communication. We hear that from teachers or parents. And I think that's morphed a little from communication to having more input. If you notice on the surveys, whether it was students at the secondary level or parents at the secondary level, they're wanting more input. So that's kind of more from communication. If you remember from some of our previous staff surveys, it was a lot about recognition or how we take care of them. And so that's kind of morphed a little bit now. If you've noticed, it's more about kind of mental health or wellbeing. And so we've got a couple of those things in place that we just talked about at our cabinet meeting last week and then in nuts and bolts this morning. And so there's two or three things that we're going to try to roll out second semester for our staff underneath that umbrella. They also talked about more time, but one of the things that we noticed a lot coming through the survey on the, on the staff was teachers wanting more help with EL and sped, whether it's materials or training or both. And so kind of working with Doug on that, we have some ideas that we're going to try to improve. And we talked about it in IL, was that Tuesday? We talked about it on Tuesday, and so we, we have some things in place for second semester for that as well. Again, I think overall, you know, when you look at the survey, as, as old coaches or leaders in buildings or the district, we always look at the losses, we never remember the wins, but this survey was really well put together. And, and I think we did extremely well in a lot of areas. We also have to do a verification report with the state based on the surveys. And, and you know, when it comes to parents, a lot of these things came through, we scored high on that. I feel comfortable talking to teachers in my buildings, I feel welcome at school. I know who to contact, when I need to find information. For our, our teachers, it was, the school's mission is clear, teachers routinely adjust instructional strategies based on data. Our teachers are building relationships with students, I recognize students in my school, they're at different educational levels. With our students, some of the things that came through on a positive is I do well in school, I have plans and goals for the future. My teachers expect good work from me, and in case of emergency, I know what to do. So a lot of areas, I, I think we scored really well. We will be working on our district level goals in the next semester. And I know our buildings are working with their leadership teams on some of those building specific goals. Any questions for me?
So from the district area, where do you see improvement? Because, where do you see improvement? Like, for instance, I know Kyle asked a question about, you know, there was a lot of issues with, you know, bullying and stuff like that were, were brought up. And so, you know, what's, what's the plan to address some of that stuff?
So in bullying, it's, it's happening in, in some of our buildings more than others. And so if you looked at the CSIP for middle school, I think they do a, a good job addressing some of that as far as education, some of the things that are going to roll out for second semester. As far as the district level, I think that we have tried, and I put that in, I think there were some more questions this week, that I think that communication or feeling important or recognized, I think we've tried to do a good job, whether that's on the district level, the building level administrators try to do that, our board has tried to do that by what we're doing with our staff and how we're compensating them. So I think those things we've improved upon. Some of the ones that have changed, and I think some of them changed since COVID, is some of these ideas about, maybe not even mental health, just wellbeing and stuff. And so we have some plans for CSIP coming up in January to help address some of that. We have some ideas for second semester about bringing in somebody from Missouri Extension Program and, and having some nightly sessions about, you know, two-hour sessions, maybe four times in January and February to help our teachers if they want to come to improve themselves in a bunch of different areas. And so we're exploring those opportunities and paying for it as a district to make that happen. So those are some of the things that we're working on right now. Don't have everything in place, obviously, but that's where our focus is right now.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, I'm, this isn't a question. So the session that I was speaking about earlier at MSBA used the platform Thought Exchange. I don't know if you guys have looked at that at all, but it, it is geared just for that collaboration and ideas. And it just sounds like a really great way to kind of hit on a lot of those marks of, of ways to make people feel more empowered, more decision-making, more opinions felt without having to do, you know, Morgan having to do more surveys all the time. It's kind of an ongoing thing where administrators can throw out a question or an idea and then gather input. And people can rank, you know, if they like this, it kind of, that's places to talk. Anyway, I would just suggest that maybe that's something we want to look into, into to help meet our, our goals.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to the next item. School board meeting, regular meetings and special meetings. So obviously, you know, with the hiring of the superintendent, on 12/11, special board meeting for stakeholder survey review, it's an open session. So folks, feel free to listen in on that one. And then everything else is closed, so we can do interviewing and stuff like that. Except when you get to the 25th of January, that's where we would actually, we're going to reschedule the meeting from the 18th to 25th, so we can actually hire the superintendent then. So just need a motion to approve the special board meetings and regular meeting reschedules presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, I heard 7-0. Okay, travel reimbursement for myself.
Make a motion to approve the reimbursement for Austin Jones as presented.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstained. So 6-0-1. Okay, CSIP reports. Does anybody want to, anything, talk about the special education one? Central office? November high school? West? East? And then the middle school?
Austin, I just want to make a general comment. For, just for the folks listening to our, our meeting, I think that the principals and the administration teams in all the buildings did a very, very good job of analyzing the climate survey results for their individual boards and putting in place strategic goals to improve the not-so-great results through the rest of the school year so that they can measure improvement for next year. So I just want to recognize our admin teams, you know, across every building, because that does take work. And it, it, it's very good for us to, to set goals. And I think it is a, a great way for, you know, staff, members of our community to realize how the results of these surveys are used within our district.
Yep, I agree. Anything else? Okay. Hey, before we go to consent agenda, there's a P, a public service announcement. There is a survey for the new superintendent that's live and active. If you need to get a hold of it, talk to Elizabeth.
I'll go to our website.
I'll go to the website. Every time you go to the website, there's a pop-up. The pop-ups there. Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Bills, okay, pulling bills. Anything else? Okay, any motion to approve, make a note that there, there is an election resolution in there, so when does filing open?
December 5th.
And it closes December 26th. Okay, so for anybody in the, in the public looking to file for Board of Education, those are the dates. Okay, any motion to approve the consent agenda, sans item D?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 7-0. Okay, Dave?
I need to have stay on my niece.
Which, which, which item?
On the bills?
Yeah, which item in the bills?
Oh my God, I found it, I mean, she's, she was getting reimbursed.
It's under the expenditure report.
Yes, sorry.
It's on that expenditure report.
All right, can we make the motion? Can we make the motion to approve all the bills, stands, what's your niece's name?
Caitlin Mikus.
Caitlin Mikus?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve all the bills, stands Caitlin Mikus. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. And now I need a motion to approve the bill for Caitlin, Caitlin Mikus.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Good catch, Dave, thank you for doing that. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
All those opposed? And those abstaining?
Abstaining.
Six zero one on that. So one of the other things we learned in Missouri, at the MSBA conference is that my motion to go in the closed session can be much more abbreviated. Elizabeth. Okay, in accordance with the Section 610-21 of the By statute of Missouri, there are two Board of Education will go in closed session to discuss six: students, 14, records which are protected from disclosure by law, three, personnel, and 13, individually identifiable personnel records. I need a motion to go in the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? We'll call starting with Heidi.
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Austin, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, let's take a five-minute break and then let's